Good evening, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Samamish for Tuesday, May 7. I'd like to first invite the color guard to come forward.
Oh, sorry, we need to do the roll call?
Well, we could do that first, sure. So if the clerk could just go through the roll, that would be wonderful.
Mayor Kayla Clark. Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshin O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
At some point, I will move to excuse Mayor Clark. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, Mayor Clark is excused, thank you very much. Now, it would be wonderful if we could have the Pledge of Allegiance and color guard, please.
Audience, close your eyes. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Color guard, cross the colors. Color guard, prepare to post the colors. Scouts salute those not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Please recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, post colors. Color guard, on your colors. Color guard, turn to ranks. About. Face. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, dismissed, intrudis. Audience may be seated.
So I would very much like to thank Scout Troops 571 and 5749 for the flag ceremony, which we deeply appreciate. That was perfectly executed, so you should be very proud. And also, thank you for your wonderful questions that you came armed with when you came up to ask us about what we thought about a range of topics. So thank you again for participating in that. It was terrific, thank you.
Deputy Mayor, if I may, did council want to get a picture with the?
We would cherish the moment of getting a picture with the entire Scout troops, yes. And to do that would be great if people could, if you guys could come up here.
Right in front, right?
Yeah, right in front. And if anybody wants to come and sit in these chairs, you can do that.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we go to public comment. The public is welcome to attend City Council meetings in person at City Hall, give public comment, or virtually, or through Zoom. Please note, the City of Samamish Council meetings are now receiving remote, online, or phone-in testimony by reasonable accommodation only. Verbal comments can be made in person at City Hall during the allotted time in the meeting agenda. Any requests for reasonable accommodation requesting remote participation must be sent in writing to the city clerk by no later than 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. At this time, we'll take some folks who are in the room first. I see a couple of names here. Mary Victor.
Good evening, council. My name is Mary Victor. I've lived in Samamish since 2000. For the critical areas tonight on the ordinance there, critical areas of stormwater are very tied together, so that's why you see me talking about them a lot. But tonight, I'm just going to focus on maps. So I brought some maps that maybe you've seen or not. This is the CARA, which is the Critical Aquifer Recharge Area. The maps are usually done by one of the water districts, usually Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer, and they belong in the Stormwater Comp Plan and also on the city website as well. So the water wells for the main water district that we have are kind of up on top of the plateau. So you'll see this blue area, the next blue ring, and the next green area. Those are where a molecule can take one year to five years to 10 years to get down to where the water is. So you want to make sure that those areas are not polluted. So while our code says that you're kind of not supposed to have septic in those areas, there's some ways around it which I don't think is a good idea. And also, if you're living in these areas, I think you should know that this is like a groundwater protection area, and I don't see any of those signs in our city. I do see them in Issaquah and Redmond. And also, you shouldn't be using herbicides, or fertilizers, or pollutants in those areas. So particularly for people that come new and haven't lived here before, I think it's really important for them to be able to learn those areas, because I know that we cannot pay to clean up our water if it gets polluted. Then this is something that's already in the comp plan from the currently adopted one from 2015. It's called aquifer susceptibility, and I encourage you to keep the map. It shows where the two water districts lie, but more importantly, it shows the yellow area. Those are kind of like low susceptibility, and then the green areas around the red are kind of medium, and then the red are high susceptibility. It's almost the opposite of the map I just showed you, because where we have the plateau at 500 feet elevation, we have a lot of soils that it could go through, even though we might have till. Where you're down by the lake, the soils are very thin, and they really can't filtrate the water. So I think it's really important to use both these maps, keep them. And in fact, all the maps that the city had, I always encourage you that you keep having on with all the new adoptions this year, and learn how to use them better. I've already shown you this multiple times. This is a steep slopes map from the comp plan. It took three or four years to get that single little legend put on there that says the gray here along the shoulder of Samamish, above Lake Samamish, is where the steep slopes are. And I would encourage us to continue working on identifying steep slopes better and getting even stronger code. The geo hazards are just the same, but they're landslide and erosion. There are places that are erosion, not landslide, but they're going to be called geo hazards. And whatever we do, these are two maps from ordinances that were emergency ordinances for years, from 2013 to 2017. This is Inglewood, a historic plat from 1889. This is Tamarack from 1964, and they need to have stronger regulation. And we shouldn't do anything like adopt stormwater code that would remove the regulations that we have. And the last map that I have is the critical drainage areas, and that is kind of, this is the concern area. So I'd like us to keep all those and not lose them as we move forward with critical areas and stormwater code. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kayla Joshi.
Hello, oh my god. Hello, we're partner of an organization known as Beyond Pressure. My name is Kayla Joshi, and this is Urja Varadkar. We are here to bring, we are here to talk about academic stress in our school community and bring awareness to the mental health issues that are being put on to students in our school district. So we want to work, our organization wants to work on giving support to students going through the stress that is high school, along with breaking the stigma of asking for help when you're overstressed. King County has conducted multiple surveys on mental health in adolescents, with one survey showing that 55% to 68% of high schoolers were stressed. However, there was no real reason specified for this stress. We knew we needed to take matters into our own hands, and we created our own survey that we passed around our school, Eastlake High School, and we realized that a lot of students found academic stress to be their main stressor, with 74% of the responses that we got said that academic stress was their main stressor. And the survey was not targeted to any specific group. So we, as Beyond Pressure, are trying to come up with solutions to this problem to help the high schoolers who are dealing with this overwhelming stress. Imagine sitting in a class for 90 minutes with the fast-paced learning saturating your brain. What would you need to keep concentrating? Well, a research article by Paige Tutte discusses the importance of brain breaks for high school students that can improve attention, problem-solving skills, memory, and reduce cortisol levels. A brief pause of just three to five minutes involving activities like doodling or coordination exercises actually recharges the brain. And by incorporating these short breaks into our school day, our stress gets alleviated, and also, our ability to focus and retain information is enhanced. Also, oftentimes, many classes will have tests and big projects due in the same week. That means we have to stay up late every day to study, work on projects, not fall behind on new assignments, and keep up with our extracurriculars. The article called "The Teens Are Not Alright" explains the benefits of coordinating workloads and tests across classes, as it allows us to manage our time more effectively and reduces the feeling of drowning in work. By implementing this, we are empowered to prioritize our mental health while still striving for academic success. The extent to which high schoolers are feeling the pressure is appalling. After interviewing and talking to many of our peers, we have noticed that a majority of people stop doing hobbies that they enjoy, such as hanging out with friends, any sports or art. This takes out all the time that they have for de-stressing, and it doesn't create happy memories for their time in high school. I'm going to lower this a little bit, so it's a little easier for me to talk. These feelings can intensify and lead high schoolers to take more drastic action, such as suicides. There have actually been suicides at my school, Eastlake, with a couple of my friends actually committing. So we know that like this is because of the pressure they feel. This issue is starting to escalate within our community, and we need to do something about it. And to do that, we want to show students that there is so much more to life beyond pressure.
And I'll go to comments that are online. Do we have any takers?
Yes. For the new reasonable accommodation, those who had pre-registered by 3:00 today, please raise your hand if you wish to give public comment. Okay, I see no commenters. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
So I'd like a motion to approve the consent calendar, please. So moved.
Second.
So now we should vote on that. Okay. So all in favor of approving the consent calendar, the consent calendar as is? Say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Okay, it's passed. And now we go on to presentations and proclamations. First is a proclamation on Affordable Housing Week, May 13 through 17. Councilmember Lamb?
This is a proclamation for Affordable Housing Week, May 13 through May 17. Whereas Affordable Housing Week is an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of affordable housing and to celebrate the progress made in addressing housing affordability challenges. And whereas all people should have safe, have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines urban housing as housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities. Whereas the State Department of Commerce projects that by 2044, King County needs nearly 200,000 net new housing units for households at or below 80% of area median income. And whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas, and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas the theme for Affordable Housing Week 2024 is planning for an affordable future, emphasizing the critical need to proactively plan and implement strategies to ensure housing affordability for all residents. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas, united to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Samamish does hereby proclaim the week of May 13 through the 17th, 2024, as Affordable Housing Week, and commits to actions and efforts to ensure Samamish residents can live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb. And Councilmember O'Farrell, if you could go through the National Police Week proplication, that would be wonderful.
Sure. National Police Week, May 10 through May 16. Whereas, there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Samamish Police Department. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently 24,067 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, 282 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 118 officers killed in 2023, and 164 officers killed in previous years. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 36th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2024. And whereas, the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May 10 through May 16. And whereas, May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and the U.S. flags should be flown at half staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Samamish will observe May 10 through May 16, 2024, as National Police Week in the City of Samamish, and salutes the service of law enforcement in our community and in communities across the nation.
Thank you, Councilmember. And now we're going to have a presentation by Chief Lysit from our Samamish Police. Thank you.
There we go. Apologies for the 2023 PD stock photo, we're working on a 2024 team photo now. Before we get to the main presentation, I'd like to review a couple of fast facts about our police department. All Samamish officers are commissioned King County Sheriff's Office deputies. The PD is located right through the front doors here, at City Hall on the right. And King County Sheriff's Office Precinct 2 is located on the second floor of City Hall, just up the stairs. They serve unincorporated areas of King County. In contracting with the Sheriff's Office, the community of Samamish has afforded access to numerous resources, including but not limited to SWAT, the Marine Unit, the Air Support Unit, which includes our Guardian One helicopter, hostage negotiators, major crimes detectives, special assault detectives, search and rescue, fire investigators, the bomb disposal unit, the Major Accident Response and Reconstruction Unit, which handles major collisions, our Civil Unit, and the Warrants Unit. I was recently looking at the King County Sheriff's Office organizational chart for Samamish Police Department and realized it was largely completely illegible if you don't work for the King County Sheriff's Office. So we made a new one, and it's currently up on our website. Everything in purple represents the administrative side of the house, the School Resource Officer, the Community Engagement Officer, and the Criminal Investigations Unit. Everything below that represents our patrol operations, first shift, swings, graveyard, and the traffic unit. But here's what is not represented in the org chart. Our detectives, the CEO, the SRO, our traffic unit, and Detective Sergeant, and I can and do respond to 911 calls to support our patrol staff. Just last Tuesday, around noon, I responded with our patrol officers to a very packed Pine Lake Starbucks, after an employee called 911 to report a customer had been seated at a table and appeared to be openly doing drugs. This customer then locked themselves in the restroom and remained there. I looked at the computer detail and recognized the subject's name. I don't work patrol, so if the chief recognizes the name, that's probably something noteworthy. I recognized him as an individual with a well-documented history of being assaulted to police and frequently in a state of mental health crisis. Our officers did a fantastic job of quickly establishing rapport with him, kept the situation calm, and convinced him to leave the restroom and ultimately the store. My point is that police work is a team effort, and we're all supporting each other. Here's what else is not represented on an org chart. Each of us, from the newest patrol officer up to the chief, carries ancillary duties within the Sheriff's Office. For my part, I'm also a captain with KCSO. The very small command staff of the Greater KCSO, me included, and with support of over 1,200 sworn and civilian staff, served the law enforcement needs of over half a million community members in unincorporated areas, as well as the 12 contract cities, King County Metro Transit and Sound Transit. Detective Sergeant Christine Elias' jobs include, ancillary jobs I should say. She's the fleet coordinator and manages all of our patrol cars. She's an explorer supervisor and advisor. She serves on both the Lake Washington School District Safety Advisory Committee and Community Connectors Committee. She is our Issaquah School District liaison. She's an influence the choice member, the point of contact for city events, and coordinates explorer involvement for those events. She's also a backup King County Sheriff's Office Media Relations Officer. And finally, she's the acting chief when I'm away. Matt Martin, who's here tonight, and you'll be hearing from shortly, also has numerous ancillary roles. He's a King County-trained EMT. He volunteered for this role in his capacity as an SRO, and has been commended by a fire chief for conducting lifesaving measures on a student. He's a trained hostage negotiator for the King County Crisis Team, and a diver with the KCSO Marine Unit. He is a former Australian Special Forces soldier and veteran. Finally, he served as SRO at Eastlake for four years, and he's also an Eastlake parent. Nate Grier, you'll also be hearing from him tonight. He's our Community Engagement Officer. He's also a diver with the Marine Unit. He's a master taser instructor, a body worn camera instructor, an EMT, a drone operator, a firearms instructor, an instructor of both CRACE and Stop the Bleed, that's civilian response to active shooter events. He's also a member of the King County Engagement Team. My point is that all of these ancillary functions we perform bring specialized expertise back to the City of Samamish. It mitigates risk, and it enhances the efficiency of our workforce. Up next, I'd like to give you a brief overview of some Samamish crime stats for the last five years. The first slide represents crimes against property. That's burglary, fraud, vandalism, robbery, vehicle theft, larceny, and more. Per 1,000 residents, which, I'm sorry, you'll notice quite a spike in 2020. We attribute that to the COVID stimulus check fraud. You'll also note that we're well below the county, almost 60% lower in fact. Beyond that, you'll note about a 25% decline from 2022 to 2023, and we're trending downward. In our five-year analysis of crimes against persons per 1,000 residents, which includes offenses such as homicide, assault, intimidation, and sex offenses, you'll notice incredibly low numbers during 2020, and we attribute this to people simply not being out and about during the pandemic. In this category, we're over 70% lower than the county. You'll also note the same 25% decline is mirrored between 2022 and 2023, still trending downward, and we're approaching numbers we haven't seen since the pandemic. I don't want to put any of our neighbors on display, but I did run the numbers. Our neighboring cities experience five times the number of property crimes than we do. They also experience three times the number of crimes against persons. This is likely due to our smaller commercial and retail footprint, and we're just a little out of the way. But the stats speak for themselves. Samamish has been and continues to be one of the safest cities in Washington. For our next slide, I would like to invite Deputy Matt Martin, our Lake Washington School District SRO, to give you an update.
Yes, Matt Martin, the School Resource Officer at Eastlake High School. I also support the other Lake Washington schools, basically the northern half of Samamish. I am a parent at Eastlake until the end of this school year, when my daughter graduates and heads off to college, to the, literally, the other side of the country. Super not happy about that. To try and explain my job, I'm going to give you an analogy. It's a good time of the year to do it. I want you to picture an ice hockey goalie, that tiny little net behind me, and inside that net is the juvenile justice system and the hospital emergency room. Standing in front of me are six professional hockey players, and every puck they're trying to hit at me is a bad teenage decision, and I'm trying to catch them, block them, or deflect them. And if you think about that, I'm not trying to get them into juvenile justice, and I'm trying to stop them from hurting themselves. And that's what I do, okay? So I've written three traffic tickets on students in four years, because I'd rather talk to them about their error of their ways than put them into the system. I've arrested no one in four years. I work on trust and mentoring. My negotiation skills get tested plenty of times. I'll tell some stories about some students and families. I had one student who was transferred from Redmond High School. We have essentially a behavioral intervention program. They run at two of the four high schools in Lake Washington, so if your kid is struggling at Redmond, they might come to us. Often, those kids come with a little bit of anger management issues, things like that, because of what their life is like. And I'll talk about one girl, I won't say her name, but she's experienced homelessness, and it's left, it left her really kind of angry and antisocial, and I gave her some time to try and settle in, and then I connected with her. She was very difficult to get through to, but I persisted. And then one day, in a good conversation with her, she said, "Look, I don't like cops, but you're chill." Which apparently means I've gotten somewhere with her. I continue to work with her and the single parent that she lives with to just help them through with a few things here and there. I have a lot of access in my job to resources that I can connect people, and I get to do that a lot. When it comes to rapport, sadly, but rarely, children have to report to me, or they decide to report to me, crimes against themselves, and it's difficult. I don't find it easy to do, and I know it's not easy for them. And then, after that's done, these kids have to get what I call the "don't make it weird" speech, which sounds weird. They have to then, after opening themselves up and describing the worst moments of their life, come to school every day and see the one person they told. So I remind them, in my job title, resource officer, I'm a resource for them. I'm not going to look at them as a victim. That's up to them. They can come to me, and they do, because they know they've already told the story to me. They don't have to explain why they're having a bad day, so we can take a walk around the school and have a chat. It's a powerful tool, and I use it regularly. Also, I said parents come to the school sometimes. I had a parent, a middle school parent, who unfortunately was a victim of domestic abuse, which Samamish Police arrested her at the time, husband, for. But then, she was a new American, from a country where divorce was frowned upon, so she did her best to get everything dropped and succeeded. The abuse continued until he left. Now, she was in a space where financial decisions, things like that, were always done by her husband, legal decisions, so she went to the school and spoke to a counselor who called me. And as a police officer, I've heard these stories many times. I'm not saying I'm jaded and don't care, but I don't necessarily react to them either until she said, "My husband said I'm stupid because I don't know how to drive." It was the only thing of her story that made me mad, which, the whole story should have made me mad. So I called, it was on a Friday, I said, "I'll talk to you on Monday." So I called, it was on a Friday, I said, "I'll talk to you on Monday." I made some calls, and I found the manager of a local driving school. I told her that story, and right just before I was finished, she said, "Matt, just stop. I'm a single mom. I got this. Give me her number." And four weeks later, she was nearing the end of her driving, and then, in the fifth week, she called me and said, "I've got my license." These are small victories you get to have when you can connect the right people with the right people. So it's not just the kids I support, sometimes it's the parents. Within a month, I got other people involved. To a sister, she'd never bought a car before, and if you're new to the country, like I once was, you don't know how to do this stuff. So she got walked through that. I mean, think about it, she couldn't even drive her son to school, couldn't pick him up. So that was a good ending, and something, you know, I get to have a small part in. My last bit, on a lighter note, I get to be a guest in classes. So if you hear that your kid was at school and got handcuffed by the school resource officer, that was probably in the forensics class, where the kids asked me lots of questions, and someone says, "Can I get handcuffed?" So don't worry if your kid got handcuffed, you'll hear from me first if it was for good reason. So I go into forensic class because that's what police do, a lot of forensic work. And the other one I regularly appear in is AP Gov. I'm fortunate that I've lived in two countries and been a police officer in two countries, and I now live in one that has a document called the Bill of Rights. It makes policing a lot different. People who haven't lived in countries that don't have that can have a very different experience with police. I prefer the way it's done here, and these kids get to learn that and appreciate an external point of view. It's a lot of fun, and I hope to do this for a lot longer. Thank you.
I was waiting for Matt to introduce me, but he didn't do it. I don't have an accent either, so it's going to be tough to follow. Nate Grier, Community Engagement Officer. So we started this position about a year ago, and when we started it, we had some really good ideas of what we wanted it to be. Sorry. I was the School Resource Officer at Skyline before this, and to me, it was kind of like being an SRO, but for the entire city. We saw some things where community members had questions, and yes, they could be answered by patrol, but sometimes it's very, you never know who you're going to get, the answers might be different, and so that was one of the things, is hey, we can bring somebody to the community that they can email, that they can talk to in person, ask questions, and then provide some follow-up on those questions to make sure that their concerns are being met. And one of those things would be community meetings. So that was one of the first things that I got hit with when we started this position, was a bunch of HOA meetings right off the bat, and we had a couple of burglaries in the city that everybody was very concerned about, and they wanted to talk about what they could do to make their neighborhoods safer. And so part of the thing that we do, and I like doing them this time of year, because we get to get everybody out in the cul-de-sac or on the street, right? And everybody gets to see everybody, because that's one thing that we were finding, is that a lot of people were just coming home at night, driving into the garage, garage door shuts, and they don't talk to their neighbors at all, right? And then, they kept asking about Neighborhood Watch, and essentially, I was talking to them, "Guys, this is what Neighborhood Watch is. It's you meeting with each other, talking to each other, having the Facebook messenger groups, 'Hey, that car was suspicious.' 'Oh, no, never mind, that's my sister's friend, she's just visiting.' 'Hey, guys, we're going to be out of town for a couple of weeks. Can you guys maybe watch the house?' and things like that. So on the community meeting front, and those are a lot of the questions that were answered, and then what can we do to make our houses safer? And those, as the Community Engagement Officer, are the things that I get to answer questions for, providing some experience with some of my SEP TED stuff, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, some of the things I did at the school, but I get to bring that out to the community as well, and then follow up with those same HOAs to see how they're doing six months later, a year later. I have a couple of meetings coming up next week and the week after with HOAs that I met with about a year ago. The other side of that was outreach, instructing. So the chief mentioned I do CRACE, which is the civilian response to active shooter events. I do Stop the Bleed. I've done some here for the city staff. But we teach different community groups, mainly some of your private preschools. There's a lot in the city. There's actually the one right here. They've got over 90 kids there every single day, right across from Skyline. And so whenever Skyline has an issue, or some sort of an event or emergency with fire trucks, they get affected by it too. So meeting with those private entities, bridging the gap, making sure that those students are supported as well, they understand what they need to do in emergencies, making sure that their emergency plans are in line with what Matt and I have done at the schools, so that we have a more congruent and unified response in how they can plan, and then giving them that Stop the Bleed training if they want it. And then I also do Stop the Bleed training for Issaquah schools, and then Matt and I work together a lot on a lot of these things. So if it's at his school, him and I will partner, we'll go visit the elementary schools, and we hand out a lot of stickers, we get a ton of different questions, but we really vibe off each other pretty well in those situations. So I teach that. And then, a couple of other different things are the relationships. So I've had community members come up to me when I'm doing a community meeting or at a school event, and, "Hey, can I ask you some questions? I want to sit down with you." And I have some very specific questions. New to the country, I'm not sure how to do this. And then I get to go and sit and have coffee with them, or they'll come here to City Hall and have a one-on-one conversation if they want, or they bring in a few other community members, and that generates into something more, and then I get emails stemming from that, and it's generally kind of avalanches from there. And that's how the year has kind of gone. And then, on the relationship side, still from my time at Skyline with juveniles, I've had a juvenile that recently overdosed and had to go to the hospital and didn't really want to go. Eastside Fire was really wanting them to get in the aid car, and they didn't want to do it, but they said, "Hey, Officer Grier, if you go with me, I'll go. That's easy, right? Somebody else can drive my truck to the hospital and I'll ride in the back of the rig." So building those relationships, having the relationships with the juveniles, the parents, the community members, having somebody that they can go to and ask those questions that may not be a 911 call. Now, I do have to explain to them in these meetings, like if you see somebody burglarizing your neighbor's house, you should call 911 and not email me at 2:00 AM. But we worked through that. So, and I lost what I was going to say next, but that's, anyways. Yeah, but it's been a really fun year. Looking forward to the next year. It's been really busy. We got some cool events that we've been doing, and those are fun, too, to get out and meet everybody at this big event. They bring their kids, they get to climb over the boats, usually they have a ton of different questions. I'm always amazed at how many questions I get. Precinct tours, I don't know, this may be a huge failure for me. Has anybody been of the Scouts here on a precinct tour to the Samamish? I've done a ton of them. Nobody raised their hand. That was a total failure. Anyways, so, but no, I get a lot of Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts that come to the precinct, they want tours. I get other community groups that come and do tours. We did schools, we did one of the elementary schools, and that was kind of a wild one. We had like three tours a day for two days or something like that. But it's fun, they get to come in, we do the fingerprinting, they get to see the cars. Deputy Sawtelle Motors Officer has a baby, a baby mannequin for doing car seat inspections, and the first question anybody I get when everybody comes in the precinct is, "What's up with the baby?" We're going to get to it. Yeah, so the precinct tours, but yeah, it's been an interesting year. And, oh, I don't want to talk about, "One pill can kill" with DEA. Those have been highly successful. We've worked with a lot of parents, and the DEA came to me and they said, "Hey, we're trying to get into the schools more, do these presentations to kids." And I was like, "You need to go after the parents, right? We can get the parents at night and really make them aware of what's going on, just so they have more information, right? Because that was a lot of the questions that I was getting. They just didn't know, you know, what's going on, how do we identify all these issues? And the "one pill can kill" stuff, working with the DEA and victims' families, has been really eye-opening and been really good. We've done a couple of presentations. Last year, we've done one this year, and we're working on a couple more. And it's just kind of getting in where we can. If they'll give us 30 minutes, 45 minutes, we'll take that. If they give us an hour, great. It's just having the ability to be flexible and meet with community members when they are able to has been really, really fantastic, so thank you.
From my perspective, it is just fantastic having these two gentlemen in their roles. They just do a tremendous job. Thank you both. I'm pleased to report that our Community Academy, a partnership between Samamish, Woodinville, and Unincorporated, was a huge success last fall, so much so that we're going to be doing it again this fall. It ran for 10 weeks and was comprised of about 30 community members, 18 of them from Samamish. The top photo is most of the class down at Pacific Raceways in Kent, where they learned how deputies practice emergency vehicle operation skills. The photo below is the class learning about our air support unit that's them in front of Guardian 1. Additional blocks of instruction included a tour of the 911 call center in Kent, an interactive use of force simulator, a canine demonstration, a SWAT demonstration. The class spent time with our crime lab, learning about fingerprints and DNA. They had a class on DUI and DUI drug recognition, and received instruction from both major crimes and special assault detectives. There will be messaging about the next academy class, and sign-ups coming shortly. We currently have a robust Explorer post of eight. Police Explorers is a program designed to introduce young adults, typically between the ages of 16 and 21, to careers in policing. Participants typically engage in community service, mentorship, and receive hands-on training. Very recently, our Explorer post went through crisis de-escalation training. When asked, our Explorers told Sergeant Elias that they joined the post because they were looking for opportunities in leadership, to be pushed outside of their comfort zones, and because it's just plain fun. I'd like to share that several of our former police explorers in Samamish now serve as deputies with the King County Sheriff's Office. This year, they'll be supporting the Samamish PD with Rigapalooza, the PGA event at Sahale, 4th of July on the Plateau, and our Silver Anniversary, and you probably saw them conducting parking enforcement at the Lunar New Year. National Night Out is upon us again. Last year was very successful, and we really appreciated Counsel coming out with us and having conversations with the community, and we received a lot of positive feedback. So this year, National Night Out is Tuesday, August 6th, and we're looking forward to get back out in the community with our partners at Eastside Fire and Rescue. And you can expect messaging shortly, and open registration is just a few short weeks The last time we met, I shared with you that some of our advanced training the Samamish police officers receive, such as implicit bias, de-escalation, autism awareness, Alzheimer awareness, constitutional use of force, crisis intervention, and active bystandership for law enforcement. But this time around, I'd like to highlight some of the training and skills that our officers receive in the academy and during field training, which they employ here every day: behavioral health, emotional intelligence, first aid, CPR, and AED, Narcan. And each one of these skills and more were utilized during an incident that occurred here in Samamish just a few weeks ago on August 10th. I'll share with you an excerpt from a commendation authored by Sergeant Elias. Male caller reported using language line that his coworker was unconscious and not breathing normally. Master Patrol Officer Chandler, Deputy Dell Roberts, Deputy Daniella Toohey responded to the location. Upon their arrival, aid was not yet on scene. Both MPO Chandler and Deputy Roberts performed CPR, and Deputy Toohey administered Narcan. The victim regained consciousness and was transported to Swedish Hospital. This is more of that teamwork I keep talking about. They're being submitted for lifesaver awards, and these are your deputies in Samamish hard at work. And up next, body worn cameras. I'm very pleased to share that Sergeant Jason Hudson from the King County Sheriff's Office Advanced Training Unit has agreed to join us today for a body worn camera demonstration. I am happy to report that as of February, every Samamish patrol officer is now equipped with a body worn camera. And for my part, I am thrilled that we have them, and so are our officers. These cameras are an independent, unbiased witness to every police interaction, which not only fosters transparency, accountability, and trust, but also protects officers from false accusations and litigation. They are good for our officers, and they are good for this community. And with that, Sergeant Hudson.
My name is Jason Hudson. I am a sergeant with the Advanced Training Unit for King County Sheriff's Office. Just so you know, our conversation is being audio and visual recorded. This is one of the things that we are really working hard on when we have started this deployment with these cameras for our deputies, is so that they're aware that these cameras are on now, that they haven't used them for a while, so it's part of our training. So one of the reasons why I did that, so that you guys can see how quick this evidence that we have will get uploaded onto the system. Some of the takeaways with this is that with this advanced public trust and awareness, so it helps with de-escalation. When people see the cameras that we have and they're using those, it often calms the conversation. It also helps later when the complaints come in, that somebody's upset or irate. It allows our supervisors to review these videos quickly, and it alleviates a lot of the concerns. Most times, when people find out that we have cameras now, they're like, "Okay," and they hang up. They don't even want to talk to the supervisors anymore or make a complaint. I'm going to try and share my screen here with you. So it worked when we practiced with it earlier, but apparently it doesn't want to work now. So here's the video that we just took, and as you can see, it's already ready to upload. All the deputies are taught and trained how to categorize their info, is what we end up doing with these. So we have different ways that they get put into the system for later. It's all right, I'll do that later, so it doesn't want to work. It's just delayed. There you go. So this just tells us that, and the deputies can do this right from their computers. My other screen is in the way here. So once I hit the submit, it goes up into our digital evidence cloud, it's on our system, so it's gone. So we can watch this once it's uploaded, and within just a few moments, this video will be on our server. It's basically, it's digitally forensic, so basically, there's no way to tamper with it. It goes from the system straight to the cloud, so it's encrypted from here to the cloud. It's usually a question that we get asked quite a bit, is how is that protected, right? So those are one of the things. It's best for evidence digital collection there, and you can go back to the presentation if you want. So the battery life on these cameras will go for an entire shift. Most deputies work 10 hours, and so they'll go a little bit longer. Obviously, they're not recording all the time. Each of our precincts have charging stations that they can dock those in. They also have cords that they can do it directly onto their laptops or mobile phones. They go through about four hours of training, learning the new system and the policies that we have since we started deploying these. We have about 300, I think we have about 380 cameras now that are out. We have 300 and some deployed. We'll have another, we'll finish up with about 538 cameras by the end of this year. So like the chief said earlier, the entire Samamish force has body worn cameras. We also have in-car video cameras. We have about 100 of those already deployed out in the, in King County throughout the various contracts and department. It is an ecosystem that we use, so we have body worn cameras that ties into our fleet, and it also ties into our tasers. I think my partner handed up cameras that he'll give to you right now, so you'll have a chance to see what those look like. So with our cameras... Yep, as soon as they turn on, I just hand it to them. So as you can see, you guys have live cameras as well, some of the mounting brackets and other tools and equipment that we have. Right now, these cameras are currently in what they call buffering, so they're in a ready mode. So when you look at the screen, you'll see it's written on the top there, it has "Ready." Part of that ecosystem that we have is a device they call signal activation. So these cameras that you're currently holding... Obviously not work, because it's under, everybody's watching. Were they turned on?
No, they're on.
Of course. So with the demos and the test stuff that we have, so when they're in this mode, typically we'll have, signal activation will activate our body worn cameras. The live ones will work. So we have devices from Axon with our Taser 10 devices. There's other features that will also activate- that will also activate these cameras for the user that's assigned to them. Our Fleet 3 system, which is the cameras inside the cars, will activate when the light bars go on, which will activate the body worn camera in unison with the device. It's all part of this ecosystem that they have tied in together. Our cameras and the videos all upload into what we call our evidence.com. So we have statements, recordings, captured any videos and things like that will go up into the system. It transcribes, so we have the ability to read the transcriptions. We can put in words if we're looking for searching for certain things or criteria that are within it. We can search for that as well. Each time a device is activated or it signals it, it'll end up letting you know that... It'll mark it on the evidence as well to tell you what device activated it and when and where it was activated. It allows supervisors, when they're reviewing the reports, if it's a use of force, they can go back to that point in time to see what happened. Again, the Fleet 3 is on the right-hand side. It's also our in-car video camera. It has a camera in the front. There's a camera that's in the backseat so that when the doors open for transporting anybody, it'll also capture what's going on there. So we have cameras pretty much everywhere now within the cars. So that was the signal technology I was referring to, our light bars, body worn cameras, our tasers being activated. Sometimes, once I mess around with the taser too many times and I hit the false signal activation, it doesn't always pick up when we're in here. So I probably shouldn't have tested it as many times as I did. It always fails, right? So again, the training and deployment, as I have a couple of our body worn camera instructors are here as well from Sammamish. Thanks to the city of Sammamish, we have a lot of our instructors help with a lot of the ancillary duties for the Advanced Training Unit. And so that's very helpful that they're able to do that. These numbers are a little old. Since June, you can see when we deployed the... This would have been June of 2023 is when we started deploying the in-car cameras. That's how many videos since then. You can see how many videos we created as of May for our body worn cameras, and we're already up over 100,000 for the body worn cameras. Just from that timeframe, how many videos we have. We have another class that we're getting ready to present for body worn cameras. So we'll have an additional 40 here by the end of the month we should have deployed out throughout King County. Again, it's four hours of training. And the goal is that this initial deployment is to get every deputy comfortable with the device, letting community members know that the device is out there. And that's a challenge because it's not something that our deputies have had to use for some time. So there's some statements and phrases at the beginning, like I explained with you that it's being audio visually recorded. It's not something that they're normal used to. It's normally used to saying. It's also, it should be noted that when it's feasible or when they have the time, they should do that and then try to remind them to say it again later on if new individuals show up. So it's not something that is a hard line that you shall as soon as you get out of the vehicle because there might be certain situations that dictate otherwise. Again, it's a new program. There's a lot of policy training and labor negotiations as far as contracts with the different guilds and stuff like that, the union and things like that that have a say in it and our OLEO. So we did launch our evidence.com about three years ago. That, again, is the software that holds all of the digital evidence. And when that system was launched, we didn't have cameras or anything else. So some of those features weren't tied in and set up yet for us within our work sites. So there's a lot of people that are involved in the project from King County's side through the King County Sheriff's Office side. So we have a lot of work sites and a lot of people that are involved in it. So we're right on time. We're actually ahead of schedule for our deployment. We're currently getting ready to roll out our supervisor training. The reason why that's important is we still have some supervisors that don't have the cameras. And with them not having the cameras, they're not familiar when the deputies come in with issues or concerns like that. So that's been a huge part of working on that. Our internal investigations unit and the procedures that they have with the way the cameras come in because that's an administrative issue that they have. So we have to deal with that. So we still have some things that we're working on with our network. I think we need more of your guys' high-speed internet and some of our remote work sites, which would help with some of those issues. And we're currently in the process of hiring a body worn camera program manager. And I'm not quite sure where they're at in the process, but I know that they've identified several people that are coming back for interviews. I don't really speak too much to our public disclosure unit other than I could say that they are pretty awesome. If you can think about... Well, everybody here has played on their phones and edited their videos with their little screens and things like that for photos. When it comes to these videos, it takes one hour of video, probably takes one person about seven hours to go through it because when they do that, they have to look at everything that's on there. They then have to redact that video, and then somebody's got to look at it again to make sure that it's ready to be sent out. A lot of times, people don't realize the time that it takes to do these videos. And sometimes, we can have on one scene, we can have 10 videos that have to be looked at. That means the body worn cameras to the in-car videos to whether or not the backseat cameras were activated. And they have to watch every single second of that to make sure that it doesn't capture something that shouldn't be disseminated out. This is just some of the rough numbers that they have, our categories that we use. That's what I was entering earlier. So that's something that helps for our retention process. Some of these things, we no longer... I apologize. We still use all of those, and those are our retention category times. We do have a process for validation, so that way, questions come up, well, do you delete these? Retention is part of that. So when it falls off on retention, we call it the falls off because we no longer need to retain it. It actually gets queued. They get prompted, and there's a validation process that our public records unit goes through to make sure that it's not something that we still need to retain. So we just added a new category for legal hold so that when somebody wants a video and it's in part of our retention drop-off, now we've caught that so that way, we make sure that we're in compliance with public records. This is their full-time employees processing their requests, and this is just a minimum of what they're working on. Their numbers are still going up even though they're getting better at the process. It's just now they started getting more requests for these, so it takes longer. It kind of speaks for itself. They have to go through and redact. Anybody that's... Depending on where the environment is, juveniles are redacted. Victims witnesses are redacted. When I say redacted, they're blurred out or they're blocked or the entire video is blocked depending on what the type of incident is.
Thank you so... Chief, I assume that was the end of the presentation. Is that correct?
It was. And Sergeant Hudson has agreed to take any questions you have. I'd like to get him out of here. He's been up since 5:00 AM, but before I come to my questions.
Okay. Well, council, do you have questions? We can let you go to well-deserved rest.
Chief's been up since 4:00. Can you go too?
We'll even release the...
I tried.
And Detective Brier and Matt Martin have also offered to answer some questions if you have any. But otherwise, feel free. I'm ready.
I mean, I thank you very much for the presentation because it really was in-depth, which I deeply appreciate. And I know the other council members do as well. So I'm just looking for questions right now, and it looks like...
Well done. Thank you so much for all of your presentations. It's wonderful, and I do enjoy seeing you all out in the community. I do see Officer Martin quite a bit only because we both have seniors at Eastlake, just to clarify. But I wanted to say, this is great information, and we do often get asked about this. So what can we do to help disseminate some of this information? Things like the crime statistics. And when people have questions... I know we just had a coffee with council and a concerned citizen. You know, car prowls are a thing, right? People break into people's cars. They had some recommendations about maybe putting signage up at some of our parks just to remind people because people often forget and they leave valuables visible in their car when they leave their car parked and things. So how can we improve that communication of sort of what the actual statistics are, how people can get engaged, and friendly reminders? Because I think that all the stuff that you guys do is so great, and I know the hardest part is getting that out to everybody in the community.
I think the council's doing a tremendous job with getting that information out. I hear about it routinely. And our side, we're still trying to put more information out on our website to be more approachable. But really, we're trying to really see what does the future of the community engagement officer look like? Because that is the point of connecting with the community at their level. And so every day with Nate, we're trying to figure out what's the next iteration of connecting. So please, by all means, if ever you have ideas about how we can do that or where we're missing the mark or we're not quite hitting the mark, I would appreciate that feedback. But I'm very pleased with the job that Nate has been doing as the CEO. And I'm very pleased with the amount of information that we have been putting out there. It has been... I'm excited that we're going to have a new communications director. That lapse with Ryan leaving really impacted our messaging on Facebook, where we do connect with a lot of individuals. And that's our primary means of getting information out in real time about things that we're working on, events that we're going to be at, and asking for people to come engage with us. So everything that I'm seeing in the last 18 months has been great progress, and I'm super pleased. But if you think of other ideas, please, I'd love to hear it.
Okay, Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you. I'd love to get those stats, those crime stats that you shared.
The ones from the presentation?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Great, thanks.
Sergeant Hudson had asked if you're able to... We got it.
Thanks for the presentation, chief. I was going to ask about the body cameras. So you gave a very comprehensive presentation on that. I was just curious what some of the areas of focus are for this year because in the two years you've been here, it seems like you've done quite a bit. And so I'm just curious what the next couple of years are going to bring.
I have a lot of things in the crock pot, and I'm stirring them. A lot are not quite ready to present yet, but it is all geared toward community engagement and reaching out to different members of the community in ways that we don't have communication as such. The schools, I'm trying to make a stronger... Matt does a tremendous job. But I want all of our patrol officers to support Matt in what he's doing in the school. You can't just be one guy doing it. I have an idea of getting all of our patrol officers familiar with the schools by walking through them in the event that the unspeakable happens that our officers are familiar with the layouts of all of the schools. I mentioned previously that we were going to be doing some sort of active shooter training. That is a tremendous undertaking, and it is incredibly expensive. And what came out of relatively... I didn't see it coming. About a month ago, our counterterrorism team with Sound Transit and Metro found this training for us, and it's going to cost us almost nothing. We will be partnering with the city of Bellevue and Eastside Fire and Rescue and Bellevue Fire. And we're going to be doing, I want to say it's six days, we'll be putting our officers through one at a time through this training so we know how to deal with active events and working in cooperation and partnership with firefighters. Without doing it in our own schools, this is as close as we can get. And at the cost, I like it very, very much. It's the skills that I'm more concerned about, and we can get familiarity with the footprints of our schools at a different time. What else are we working on? I just have a lot. I have a lot of projects that I want to bring to fruition. But we're trying to establish new relationships with the business corridor. We actually started doing this in the spring, reaching out to the QFCs, Safeways, the Bartels, asking what issues are you dealing with? And are you reporting them? If not, why? We want them to know that they can call Steve and say, "I have a problem, let's work on it." Because as of last year, we really had no one-on-one conversation with any of the commercial districts. So that's another component. And we're also reaching out to different cultural and religious leaders within the city just to have a handshake and/or a say hello and let them know that they can come speak to us. I just met with the Samamish Muslim Association about a month and a half ago and had a very fruitful conversation. I've been invited to come and speak relatively soon. So those are similar, or those are the things that we're currently working on.
That's awesome, thank you very much. It's good to hear that you're reaching out more. I mean, you're already doing a lot for the community, but just emphasizing a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chief. We've got another question here. Sid.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there, so very encouraging to hear the crime statistics. I think 20% lower year-over-year for both crimes against property and persons. Are there any challenges that you have been facing that are new in the past year? Anything that maybe you haven't seen that is on the rise?
Thank you for the question. No. The burglars we dealt with last year were, that was an undertaking. And we had to work in cooperation with many other agencies to get a handle on that. But I'm pleased to report that things are good again. I'm not hearing anything about car prowls. We are coming into summer, that's probably an issue that we're going to deal with. But many of the issues that the city was dealing with, the Golden Mansion, for instance, not really a thing anymore. It hasn't quite resolved, but through the diligent efforts of our patrol officers being visible, talking to neighbors, I just haven't heard word one about that in probably four or five months, which is fantastic. And there's been a couple other residences that have, we keep an eye on. But as far as anything new coming up, not a thing.
Great, it's excellent to hear.
So I have one quick question, and then I'd like to get us together for a photo. So my question has to do with staffing. I know in the past that that has been problematic. And I was wondering what you were, how, where you were at.
The Sheriff's Office is doing a tremendous job with hiring. This time last year, we had, I can't remember, it was 100 or 120 vacancies. We were down to 70. They're, the training unit and the recruiting unit, they're going out all over the country and hiring a blend of both lateral and new officers. We have a really, really robust recruiting effort. And we're trying to do that also from within. Having pride in our agency, you can see it reflected in our work. And there was a time when I was newer, some 20 years ago, when being the King County Sheriff's Deputy was the best thing in the world. There was nothing else I wanted to do. And in the last 15 years, we've hit some slumps where, you know, sometimes you wondered, "Am I in the right profession?" I don't feel supported. I'm doing my best every single day, and I don't feel like I'm supported. And that is not the case anymore. The last three or so years, two of which have been, you know, here in Samamish, feel supported. And I love the work that we're doing, and it's meaningful and it's important. And we're back in public service mode. We're not feeling sorry for ourselves anymore. We're getting back to work, and we're doing the things that you pay us to do. Not that we didn't, but you know, we're not feeling sorry for ourselves anymore. And so our staffing, we anticipate being down to roughly probably 50 vacancies department-wide by the end of the year. And for the record, we're almost always about 40 with attrition, injuries. People are, you know, not quite separated from the department. But 40 is pretty much a standard. And when I got here, we were about 78% staffed, and we're up to 85 now. I've tried some unique recruiting efforts. I think morale here at our precinct is very high, I think. Thank you. We're doing a lot of great stuff. People are happy in their roles. And that makes us excited to come to work. And for the first time in a long time, we're getting people applying to work for the city of Samamish. That hasn't always been the case, because we are a destination. We are out of the way, and we don't have some of the fun calls that other precincts do. But we make up for that here with community engagement. And we have some really cool roles to do here, like the Marine Unit, that other work sites don't have. So we're up to 85% staffing, and I'm trying, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I have some ideas about how to get us up toward 87, maybe even 90% in short order. So I'm not as concerned with staffing as I once was. Things are definitely trending upward, not only for Samamish, but for the entire King County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Last call, anyone? Okay, let's grab a quick photo if we don't mind.
Not at all.
Okay, thank you. So let's get going then with our unfinished business. Wait, sorry, take that back. We're going with a presentation with the monthly council projects update, comp plan and town center amendments, critical areas update. So we're looking for David Pyle and I believe Audrey Starcy.
All right. Good evening, Council. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. That's a hard presentation to top. And actually, funny story, my wife's a school principal, and three of her students are children of a Samamish officer. So, small world. So I am here tonight in person, and Audrey Starcy has joined me, or will be joining me in the cloud here in a minute to provide our monthly major projects update. We have a new format to share with you this evening, so bear with us. I think this is an enhancement that you'll like, but we're testing it out tonight. So first, we wanted to provide the previously shown list view that really is in a table format, so that anybody out there watching can take a screenshot and see how these things, or how these meetings and opportunities to participate in these different events might shake out over the next three months. I do want to highlight that the next three months are absolutely critical for us for the balance of our year. As we move a large amount of material through our Planning Commission, the meetings that will be held in May, June, and July are essential to the next phase of these projects, where these efforts will be brought to the council beginning in September. So much thanks to your Planning Commission for some long meetings and some really, I want to say, hard material to work through. So with that, I'll move to the new format. And for the Town Center Plan and Amendment, Town Center Plan and Code Amendment Project, we're currently working with Arch and the consultant team to discuss market predictions and feasibility of different approaches related to affordable housing. We have planned stakeholder meetings with the Town Center property owners and developers scheduled in early June. And we'll be providing updates on what's been learned to date and the project's next steps at the June 20 Planning Commission meeting and the July 16 City Council meeting. The next one, and I think we got this right, is the Comprehensive Plan. Review of the initial draft of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan has been completed. We're currently compiling all of the comments we received from the Planning Commission, from staff, from all the stakeholders that we brought it to, into a different, a new updated draft, which will then be brought back to the Planning Commission. At this past May 2, and at the upcoming May 16 meeting, the Planning Commission will be beginning review of proposed development regulations to respond to changes in the Comprehensive Plan and also changes brought forward by many of the bills that passed the state legislature over the past few years. And there are many. On June 20, the Comp Plan Team will host an open house at City Hall to promote the draft plan and promote and collect feedback from the community. That will be in advance of the Planning Commission meeting, where the Planning Commission will then take up review of the plan again. The Planning Commission is scheduled to hold a public hearing at the end of July, July 25, to recommend to the City Council the Comprehensive Plan and associated development regulations. The next item, I'll pass off to Audrey.
Thank you so much, David. Good evening, Council. And we have a few items coming your way from Public Works as well. So last Thursday, May 2, Public Works and the City's consultant, HBL, provided a presentation to the Planning Commission about five proposed changes to the city's stormwater code, specifically to the city's stormwater addendum to the 2021 King County Service Water Design Manual, the city's adopted stormwater design manual. The team will be back to Planning Commission on May 16, where we'll hold a public hearing for those proposed code updates. And back to you, David.
Thank you, Audrey. The next item is the Critical Areas Update. The consultant, Facet, who's formerly known as Watershed, they've rebranded as Facet, has sent the first version of the draft Critical Areas Rules to staff. The internal project team has completed their review and gone over revisions. The draft revisions are now being sent out to our internal departments and our stakeholders, such as the water and sewer districts and the tribe. Tonight, the project team will meet with the City Council to give an update on the proposed changes and get direction on specific decision points before bringing the draft to the Planning Commission on June 6. On May 9, we'll meet with the Sustainability Commission to give an overview of the project and make them aware of the proposed amendments to the Critical Areas Rules. We're scheduled to host a booth at the Farmer's Market on May 15 for public outreach. And on June 5, we'll meet with the Parks Commission to give them an overview of the project and make sure they're aware of upcoming City Council and Planning Commission meetings. And I'll turn it back over to Audrey again for the Transportation Master Plan.
Thank you. So we provided a quick introduction to the Parks Commission last Wednesday, May 1. We will be joining DCD at the Planning Commission meeting on May 16 to provide an update to the city's first Transportation Master Plan, or TMP. We'll be back to the Planning Commission on June 6 and July 18, where we'll provide the draft Transportation Master Plan for public review, as well as the public hearing. And looking forward to those dates. Back to you, David.
Thank you. And to close, the SB 5290 Permit Process Improvement Work that you previously heard about is moving forward. However, we have momentarily paused that work as we are caught up on that. And we want to make sure to get caught up on our comp plan and Critical Areas and other efforts before we bring that work back in more of a bundle to the council in the fall. So in addition to these items, there are still many other items moving forward, such as we'll be visiting the Sustainability Commission, I believe, in June, where we'll be presenting the updates to the city's building codes and energy codes and making sure the commission has an understanding of how those work. In addition to that, there's other work that I, you know, can't recite off the top of my head, but we remain very busy. And I'm really looking forward to getting through this next few phases of some of our major projects. This is a really pivotal moment for us, so thank you.
So, Council, are there any questions? Okay, I hear resounding joy over the new format.
Great, thank you. And I'll thank the staff who designed this. It wasn't my doing, so.
Well, next, let's move right ahead into the presentation for unfinished business, Critical Areas Ordinance Update Proposed Changes. And David, again, I believe this is you.
Yes, thank you, Council. We'll do a little bit of a scene switch off here, so just a second.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Buliel, and I am a Management Analyst with Community Development. And I'll be introducing our Critical Areas Ordinance update tonight. I'm joined by David Pyle, Avril Beatty, who is our current Planning and Permit Center Manager, Jasvir Singh, our Senior Planner, and our consultant team, Nell Lund, is here. And Dan Knuckle is joining us virtually from Facet, formerly known as DCG Watershed. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to review the proposed changes to the Critical Areas Ordinance that have been identified by the project team. We will start with a quick project background and recap our last two meetings with the Planning Commission. And then we will go over a few key topics that we'll refer to later as decision points and get some feedback from the council. So a reminder of the overall process that we are following. The city is required to review and update our Critical Areas Ordinance to align with best available science. And the deadline is set by state law. In this case, the update is happening parallel to the project, or to the Comprehensive Plan update. So we are working closely with that project team. And the update must follow a checklist from the Department of Commerce and must be reviewed by the Department of Commerce and the Department of Ecology. There are six types of critical areas and the areas of special focus that were chosen last year by the council as being particularly important to Samamish. In the agenda packet, the first exhibit is the Critical Area Type Summary Sheets. And the project team created these to help our commissions, our council, and the public learn about what the critical area types are, why they are protected, how they are protected, how they should be protected, and more background information. They also include the full list of proposed changes for each critical area type. We recognize that this is a very technical topic and hope that these summaries are helpful as we move into more detail. A quick overview of our project timeline. We last met in October of 2023 during the Joint Planning Commission Council Meeting, where we presented the findings of the renewed review and analysis of the current Critical Areas Ordinance. So those reports are the Best Available Science Report, the Existing Conditions Report, and the GAP Analysis are all available on the project page of the city website. Since then, we have had two work sessions with the Planning Commission to review the proposed changes. This is a very long list of items, so the work was split into two meetings focusing on three critical area types at each meeting. After tonight, we will return to the Planning Commission to review the draft Critical Areas Ordinance before their public hearing in July. And then we will return to the council in October for a review of the draft before the public hearing in November. And as David mentioned, in between those meetings, we will also be hosting a booth at the Farmer's Market next Wednesday. And we'll be going to the Sustainability Commission this Thursday, and then the Parks Commission in June. Because of the complexity of the topic, the project team has sorted the proposed changes into three categories to help guide your feedback. The Category 1 changes do not need feedback or action. They are minor updates, clarifications, or required changes. And these have been included in the agenda packets, but for the sake of time, we have not reviewed them in detail in our presentations. The Category 2 changes may need feedback or direction from our commissioner council. They may not impact the timeline, but may need additional budget or further analysis in order to include these changes. And Category 3 changes require direction to be added to future work plans as they may have a large impact on stakeholders or require additional budget or staff time. So at our work sessions with the Planning Commission, we went through each of the proposed changes in Categories 2 and 3 for all the critical area types. And from that list, the project team has identified several of those proposed changes where we'd like to get some feedback or direction from the council. We do have quite a few, a lot of information to get through, so we're going to try to go through the background on all seven decision points before we open it up for each of them. So if you have questions, please note them down, and we will revisit them when we get to the end. And I'll hand it over to Avril for our first decision point.
Good evening. Just making sure it's not too echoey. Thank you for being here this evening. So as Jackie stated, we are going to try to get through these as expeditiously as possible. So write down your notes, write down your questions, and then we're going to tackle all of that at the end. So this first decision point, we do have them numbered for easier reference. So number one, should the city regulate storm mod facilities in karas to focus on water quality? One challenge that we have is that groundwater can be contaminated when water is not treated and injected very quickly into the subsurface of the ground and potentially into the aquifers, or areas that can easily get to the aquifers. We don't define injection wells, though. So to address this, we want to have a definition of injection wells, where it's basically the proportions of the depth to the width that allows water, by force of gravity, to quickly go through the ground without being treated. So we don't want that to happen. We want to have them more regulated, but we've got to define them in order to regulate them. So that's number one. So number two, should the city allow the use of compensatory? I have a hard time with that word. Compensatory mitigation for off-site banking and mitigation. This would effectively be a way of figuring out the monetary value of restoration to occur off-site. The reason why we want to have this as an option is that we have a lot of small sites that either have a stream or streams, wetlands, something where it's a homeowner, they're going to use their yard, they have dogs and kids that play in the yard, and they'll hop over those critical area fences. And they spend a lot of money, and it's very difficult to maintain that protected space. So, and also, there's a lot of logistical difficulties in making sure that that area with its mitigation, with the plantings and the care and everything, happen appropriately over up to like a five-year period. So there's a lot of logistics involved with tracking those and having reports sent to the city every year for monitoring. So as an option, having this off-site banking where all of, all the monetary value could be put to an off-site bank, where it could be potentially at risk from being trampled on by kids and dogs, someplace where it would be better protected and consolidated within a larger area. So decision point number three, should the city require additional mitigation for impacts due to temporary disturbances? So these are referred to as temporal impacts. So if someone has a wetland near their house and they want to do an addition, and they're doing it within the regulations, but you have a clearing and grading limit where you have to do work on your property, and it may impact that wetland, but you've got a restoration plan in place. However, that construction can take a long time to get completed. And in the meantime, there's impacts to that wetland. So once the restoration occurs, it could be a couple of years after construction started, then that area has to try to gain back. It takes a long time for it to potentially get back to where it was. So instead, we're looking at how can the immediate restoration be more, at the same quality of what the wetland or area would have been had there not been any impacts from construction? So we're looking at, a recommendation is to have more intensive restoration in place from the get-go, so that there's not an overall loss due to time of the impacts to that critical area. For decision point number four, should the city update the definition of habitat corridor and conservation areas and add a list of species of local importance? So habitat corridors are very important so that we can have populations of animals that aren't too closely related to all the other animals in that little area. So we want to make sure that there's connectivity to all these different locations of habitat. And right now, the definition is very strict and sort of difficult to meet, which means there's a lot of opportunity for potential habitat corridors that we're not gaining under the current regulations. So we are recommending that we expand the definition so that we can capture more, there's areas for protections, and also identify the types of species that we're looking to protect. So like, we don't need to protect eastern cottontail bunnies, as cute as they are, they're not native. So making sure we're focusing on the right species. So for decision point number five, should the city update the definition of stream and modify protective buffer options? So right now, we define streams by type, whether or not it's a fish-bearing stream. But right now, the only fish are regulations care- our regulations care about are salmonids? Did I pronounce that correctly? Salmonids. Oh, so close. So we want to expand that definition to encompass all the fish. We want to love all the fish equally. So we're looking to save, to protect more than just one type of fish. We also are looking to change the focus from the stream itself. Streams need to be protected, yes, but the habitat along those streams are generally referred to as riparian areas. So to change the terminology to understand that the focus isn't just the stream itself, but the riparian area, not only do those areas help filter, you know, waters that come into the stream, but they provide a lot of habitat for animals. They also provide that corridor functionality. So using, changing the terminology, but then also, there's a recommendation from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife to use something referred to as the site potential tree height for determining the width of these riparian areas. These require soil studies and can have buffers of like 200-something feet. Like, they're very large. It's a very strict regulation. And in the months of analysis of these options, this is a very overly strict way of trying to regulate an existing urban environment. We may not be very dense, but we're still an urban environment. So staff is recommending that we update our definition of stream. However, we keep with our current typing so that we can have the flexibility. We can look at things on a case-by-case basis, and we can make sure things are protected more holistically and that we don't use the site potential tree height because that could have much bigger impacts to the homeowners in Samamish than what we currently have. And we have got pretty good regulations in place already. So for decision point number six, should the city clarify the relevance and purpose of maps? This is always a fun one. So we have, most of our map layered are listed as advisory. However, there are some that are referred to as de facto. They are what they are. It doesn't matter what the characteristics of your site are. You have to follow those regulations. Some of these maps, they were designed with a slightly different purpose in mind. They were done at a regional scale. They weren't meant to be used at a parcel level, and they served their purpose. They did a great job of protecting parts of the environment before we had the technology that we have now, before we have the regulations that we have now. So at this point, given all the things, we are recommending that instead of having these de facto maps, that we allow site investigation by each property for each individual project to determine if that area really does have those defined critical areas within the project site. So the only exception are the kara maps because those are determined by the water districts, and they are just adopted by reference, and those are approved within the water district's water comprehensive plans. And decision point number seven is should the city consolidate and clean up geo-hazard regulations? So this is our most fun question. So our existing regulations within the erosion hazard areas were put in place prior to the adoption of our modern stormwater protections. And so we have the Surface Water Design Manual from King County. We have our stormwater regulations in R code, and they provide, there's a lot of overlap. We've learned, we've worked really closely with our stormwater team, there's a lot of overlap and redundancy between these various sets of rules. So if we can consolidate all of our erosion hazard areas into just one overlay where it's advisory, so that way, each time someone comes in and says, "I want to build a deck off my house," or "this lots vacant, I want to build my retirement home here," then we can look at each site individually and figure out what is appropriate for the protections of that property specifically and how it can be regulated accordingly. I think I covered everything on that slide. So here's the summary of these decision points. These things were also all covered in the summary sheets. They were also based on our Best Available Science Report and our GAP analysis reports. I'm sure you all read them like 10 times each. So any questions that you have about these? If there's no, we're hoping, 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 that you generally agree with the directions that we are proposing for these decision points. But we would love some feedback if you have any objections. Any thoughts or questions, please, please ask.
So council, do you have questions? Councilmember Lamb?
I just had a question on the off-site banking mitigation. I think I spoke with David like a year ago about wetland banking. And the conversation was that you thought it would be good because then we could create like larger contiguous areas of wetlands? Am I remembering the conversation correctly? And then I took a look at the, I think it was a King County map that showed our wetlands, and it didn't seem like there was a lot. And so I'm just kind of connecting the two conversations. Is it possible to connect it? And is that the primary, like, positive of having wetland banking?
So wetland banking serves a really important purpose. In the past, the question has been centered around whether, and the city itself does not own a bank. The Water and Sewer District does have a bank within city limits. I think the nearest city the bank we might use is the Bear Creek Bank?
Keller Farms.
Keller Farms.
Or King County has a mitigation reserve program with some sites not far over the border in Isaguá.
So the issue in the past has been, and other cities have had this same conversation, that when you don't have a bank within your city that projects are directing their mitigation to, that it's considered to be an exportation of green space and an exportation of critical areas function outside of the city. So that's the first hurdle that usually you have to get past. The challenge that we have is that when, as Avril was describing, when you have a smaller project that requires mitigation, that often, more often than not, I would say it's not successful or its success is limited. And its success is limited by not the short-term monitoring that we require and all of the things that we do to make sure they get past their, say, five-year period. But really, it's the long term of it. The property changes hands. Somebody cuts down the vegetation. It's really hard for us to be constantly monitoring these things, and really, we're reactionary. So if somebody reports this happening, we do take action. But more often than not, people don't report it, and we don't know about it. And therefore, the success is limited by the, I want to say, wherewithal of the property owner to maintain it. So mitigation banking provides an opportunity for us to amass smaller mitigation projects into a location that might be meaningful and is something that is easier to maintain over time. It's also something that I'm finding more and more is easier in cases of minimal impacts to simply allow it rather than struggle with an applicant who doesn't want to do it, keeping in mind that a permit is not something anybody wants to really get. Additionally, it's something that could serve a purpose as a city if we have public works projects. I know the Water and Sewer District, that's why they built their bank is because it is more affordable for them many times to go to the, use the bank instead of to do isolated mitigation efforts across the city.
Okay, great. The other question was on the maps. So are they advisory because things can change regularly? Like, our maps are like from 20, like, they're like 20-some years old, a lot of them. Is it a cost issue? Like, you just can't like do them all at the same time? And like, climate could affect it? And I'm just trying to understand that.
I'll start, and I'll be corrected where I'm wrong. So, you know, I went to school for geographic information systems many years ago. And one of the challenges is that the way in which the maps we have were created is they were using a technology based on paper maps, based on much larger scales, quarter sections. So the level of precision of these maps is not at the level that we have in our current geographic information database. So we are now working on a parcel level with like a, you know, two-foot pixel precision. And what we've done is we've digitized maps that were created in the paper format on the quarter section scale. And we are now applying those maps down onto the parcel level at the two-foot pixel scale. And what happens is, is you have a line weight on a quarter section scale that might be, you know, say, a line weight nine. Well, that line weight nine might actually spread across maybe five or six parcels. You don't even know really where that line is, but when it's digitized, you can represent it as a smaller line weight, and it's not accurate. So typically, that's not a problem. Our maps are seen as advisory. So really, all that is, is saying, hey, you might need to, if you're, it's an indicator that we want further study done, right? Somebody might be advised that there's probably a wetland or a stream present. The other category are the non-advisory, what I call de facto maps. And that is where we have maps of the same generation that are literally being used as if they are gospel in our code. And there is no way to refute that condition except by our bringing a map amendment to the council and passing a resolution. So you might find that your property is on the edge of that mapped area. The precision and scale of the map is, you know, not really very good. Again, these are old maps. So we would need to comprehensively go through each of the maps that we have and modernize them and do, perform new studies. Sometimes it's more affordable. Sometimes it's far more expensive. You'll note that one of the other amendments that we're looking at is importing or is asking applicants to provide their actual survey information in a format that we can then digitally upload into our GIS system. Then it'll be available for everybody to use. But that doesn't mean that the whole city is all of a sudden going to be showing up in the system. It will take quite a while for us to fill in all the gaps, unless we wanted to study it on our own, which is quite an expensive endeavor, but something we would love to take on. We just need the funding and time to do it.
Thank you. I generally agree with the decisions, the recommendations. This is like very dense information that was presented to us.
Thank you, Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My observations are pretty much almost the same as Deputy, as Councilmember Lamb. I would have to say, decision point two, I will completely admit that I have no idea what that is. So I have to read that and read that and read that again before I can fully understand it. On the other decision points, one, three through seven, my answer is probably yes. It seemed like it sounded good. We received public comment tonight about our maps. So that's why decision point number six kind of came up at me as well. So we're not talking about, as Mary talked tonight, about keeping certain maps that we already have that had great information. And we're not talking about getting rid of anything. We're talking about making them more accurate, more precise, and more usable to site. And we're talking about very specific site locations. Am I right in saying that?
Yeah, I think the intent is just to make clear that the designation is advisory so that site-specific studies can supersede the regional maps.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And I think number two, I'm just going to have to read that because I fully don't understand it. So, but otherwise, everything else sounded like that was a yes to me. But I will have to go back and read through number two a little bit more. And I'm sure I'll be sending you questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Great, thank you so much. For number one on the recommendation, so here, it's just summarized as defining injection wells. But I felt like on the slide, there was more to that. Is that really the only thing we're talking about on decision point one? Sorry.
For decision point one, this was one that we've worked with the Sandlot and Northeast Water and Sewer District, where their concern is our lack of definition of injection well.
Okay, so that's really the crux of this. It's just defining that. Because I was just trying to understand, like, you know, what problem are we really trying to solve here? And so I want to make sure I fully understand. Just because it's my understanding that like, most of that area that this would apply to is already developed, right? So this isn't necessarily, and I don't want you guys to have to do a lot of work if there's not a lot of reward.
It's a quality versus quantity issue. Currently, the city regulates in karas quantity, but we don't regulate quality. So what they're wanting us to do is by defining injection wells, they then have the ability to work with our public work staff to make sure that water, when being inserted into the ground through an injection well, also has a component of water quality treatment to it to ensure that our aquifer does not become degraded over time by waters that shouldn't be diverted into it. But yes, it is largely developed. It would apply to redevelopments. It would apply to somebody who wanted to put a sport court in. But yes, it is largely developed. It would, it would apply to redevelopments. It would apply to somebody who wanting to put a sport court in. Somebody, somebody who's doing a widened driveway or, you know, a, a home expansion or new development or some form of pollution generating surface, this would apply to.
Excellent. Thanks for that clarification. And then for number four, sorry. This one was interesting to me because like there's already a list of federal and state protected animals. So what animals locally would we need to protect that aren't already on the list?
That's a great question. So as the code is written now, it references state and federally listed threatened and endangered species. But our Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife also has a published list of priority habitats and species that goes beyond that endangered and threatened list. And so to help keep common species common, we recommend highlighting some of those as species of local importance to make sure they're reviewed and addressed as, as sites are developed.
Is it possible to just refer to that? Because I'm thinking like, I love the idea of having more, you know, species protected, but how do we keep the maintenance costs down? So not having to keep our own list, but just point to lists that are already maintained by the state. So if that's a list that already exists, can we just, could that just be the update?
You, you could, but the list is, it's statewide. So it has a lot of species that are either marine or just not present on this side of the cascades, you know. So having a tailored list kind of focuses that work and makes it more efficient for, for people who are applying it.
As long as the maintenance on our staff over the long term isn't burdensome, then like, because you know, if the species doesn't exist, we can ignore it. But yeah. That, that sounds good. Appreciate that. And then last but not least, I think, is on number five. What are the other implications? So in general, right, like renaming something sometimes seems like a good idea. But sometimes there are lots of unintended consequences. So what might the other implications be if we suddenly rename streams to riparian? Because that feels like it could be one of those things where like, oh, this is so much better. And then suddenly, oh dear.
Dan, feel free to follow up on, on this one if I miss anything here. But the, the reason behind, the thing prompting that recommendation is a bit of a paradigm shift in WDFW's best available science recommendations for management of streams, which they're really looking at the whole riparian area and achieving full riparian function, which is where the site potential tree height analysis comes in. And they're actually recommending equal protection of streams regardless of type. So it's a big paradigm shift and it was a lot to process, which is why we're recommending kind of inching your way into considering the updated science by using the riparian area terminology, because it does align with the current best available science. But combining that with some of the practices that you currently utilize for protections.
So does it inch us or does it like we're jumping into the stream to go with the metaphor?
I, I don't, I don't think the terminology change has any significant implications at this point. But it does get people thinking about the buffer as a connected part of that habitat that, that we're targeting for protection.
Okay. And I definitely agree with your recommendation to not adopt the SPTH. So definitely go along with that. And then just in general, so these seven specific decision points, does this mean we're basically going with category one plus these seven changes? Because you kind of presented each of the areas and there were like three categories of potential changes. So I wasn't sure how these decision points related to the three categories.
So there are additional discussion points that we're having with the planning commission at this point. These, however, we felt were ones that we could spin out on with the planning commission. And we wanted some additional feedback prior to going back to the planning commission to help guide their conversation on these topics. You'll see in the, in the exhibit attached to the agenda bill that there are many other category twos. But we feel that, that with our guidance from Dan and Nell and from staff, that we can, we can get through those conversations with the planning commission and find the right path forward to recommend to you all. You'll have another shot at this when it's brought back to you after your summer break. And you'll get to see the category twos and what the planning commission ultimately decided on those as part of their recommendation that's brought forward to you.
Great. Because the, I, I think I hear Scott's voice in my head when, because just thinking about all of these things, like obviously we want to protect the environment. But as with everything, it's a balancing act, right? If we go too far, there can be other, again, far-reaching implications around our other goals and things. So I hear the, like, is there a specific set of issues that we're trying to address or something that we feel is strongly lacking when we start moving beyond the category one changes? And so as you guys go through this and you present things, I just really want to understand and make sure, because things like our stormwater code and things like that, like we already have some really awesome code. So I want to make sure that, again, the level of effort that we put in to doing these things yields the, the reward, especially when most of our challenges are in the retrofitting areas, not necessarily needing to regulate new development because there's not that much of that. And again, our new codes, our current, our existing codes already do a great job. So I want to make sure we're spending our time and energy and money on how do we bring those other things up to our current codes as opposed to just keep making the, the current codes more stringent without necessarily that, that. I liked your scales that you had done before, David, right? Like we, we do lots more work, but we don't get a whole lot out of it. So that, that's just my general, when I, that was my general read of it was like, with every one of those bullet points, I was like, is there really something lacking from the, the best available science that we have to, that we have to go above and beyond?
So one of the, the good news, I think, is that we do, thanks to Nell and to Dan and our, our on-call consultants who help us on permits and projects and navigating some of these complex areas, we, I would say, do wetlands and streams or riparian areas very well.
Yeah.
The area that we're challenged by is the geo-hazards. And that is because of the way our code is constructed. And that's what we're trying to largely address. I think the, the other changes you're seeing are related to gaps that were identified with best available science versus our current conditions. If you go back to those reports, you'll see where those are highlighted. And we're, we're trying, we're trying to walk the line of complying with best available science, not totally redesigning our code, not adding new regulation if it's not needed, but also providing the level of protection that is expected by the community and, and by the science.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much.
Councilmember Tree.
Thank you. So let's start with number one on the car or Karen. So, yeah, define it. Definitely, I mean, I just went through a whole list of stuff, but I'll, I'll try to keep these brief. But you have to design or define the injection wells and what does that mean? And how about like, don't do it? The other part of this was, I just, it just, it came really clear and kind of just stuck out when I was looking at this is that, hey, we have to support additional development standards be required to protect our groundwater, the quality of our groundwater and the quantity. So it's not an either or, it's an and. And so I think that's definitely needs to be taken into consideration. And so when I looked at that and I was like, okay, what, let's go back and look into some of the details of the information that you provided in the packet. And I was like, so what we're supposed to do as a city, as, as a governing body legislators, is I need to protect or in a sense reduce the risk that groundwater would get contaminated. And so I think outlining our land use, which is definitely something we need to address in our comprehensive plan update. So when we're looking at land use, I, I, I need to make sure that the use of the land takes into consideration, number one, that you're not gonna, it's very low risk to the quality of the groundwater. So that should just be number one. Because, because our job is based on the Constitution of the United States as those who are to govern is to protect life. So I need clean, I need clean water, period. And it'd be really nice as an environmentalist that I don't get it out of a plastic bottle. So in Sammamish right now, it's easier to preserve and protect than it is to try to fix the problem, as we've heard from even residents here tonight. The other thing is that I would, I, I guess I'll go to the Sammamish Water District too to ask this question. But I agree on the method on how to update the map that you're proposing for the critical aquifer recharge areas. So that can, you can take that right to the planning commission too, because I think that is a really good idea. On number two, my initial response to that is just a flat out no, don't do it. And the reason, and the only reason why I say that is because I, I lean with some of my colleagues here is that I, maybe I don't completely understand the banking part of it. And because the other part of me is saying, hey, if I just reduce the size of the development, I may be solving my, solving the problem. So if I have a home that is near, on a river or I own property that's on a riparian area or on a landslide hazardous area where, oh, I do. And, and then when that happens, it's like, oh, I can't, this is all I can develop here. And that's, that's reduced. So it's a smaller footprint, therefore I meet all kinds. And, and then the nice thing is there is no maintenance. It's taken care of. And it's either taken care of by the property owner or the part of the area that the city takes care of, which is the right of ways. So that's number two. Number three, additional mitigation for the impacts during construction. Sure. Yeah. We, and why not? And I think the idea here is, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, but I think the idea here is that, hey, look, if you're gonna grade this property and then it rains and washes sediment and silt down into the tax, the taxpayer-funded right-of-way or storm facility or into a wetland or a stream or into the lake, yeah, wait, timeout. No, you can't do that. We're gonna make sure you get the fence up. You're gonna make sure you get the certain things up. Plus, this, why don't you also then enhance the downstream or the downhill or go uphill then and enhance that area around you before you even finish your development? So that when your project is done and your enhancement comes back into play two, three, four, five years down the road and the trees now are actually growing and doing their job, you, you have advantages because you took care of it upstream or you're filtering it better going downstream. It just makes sense. So good move. I think you should do that. Habitat, hi, wildlife corridors, habitat corridors. And if you want, I think it's even been submitted to the city. There are people who have done plans on their properties. They have lists of the native species, the trees that are on the property, the animals that come through those properties that are specific and native to Sammamish and to the Northwest and to this side of the mountain and this side of, you know, not coastal, but what is right here in this area, in this ecology, this ecosystem. And yeah, we should save the pocket gopher, you know. He, he only lives for two years. And so he's easy to extinct. Well, if you tear up his home and you make him move, he might not make it, or she, or the little ones. And so, yeah, there's deer, bear, bobcat, cougar, and the list goes on. And I haven't even started talking about the birds and the raptors that are here that are fabulous and amazing. And some of them, this is the only place they live, the Northwest. And so, yeah, we should be protecting their habitat. So, so build your riparian buffers on the streams and get the buffers correct and allow the rivers to do what rivers do, and that's move. But within a certain area, they just, that's what they do naturally. So let them be nature and let them be natural. And they become our corridors for the wildlife. So it's, it's a win-win situation. I think the only thing you might be a little careful about is on including all fish. Maybe a challenge because then you also then are including invasives. And that's not a good thing for our native fish. So if I'm gonna say, okay, it's okay because there's cutthroat trout coming in here, well, that's gonna eat the salmon. And so we, we have a loss of due to predation for the very thing we're trying to preserve and protect, which is the cocany salmon not going extinct. So you might want to just, that one, I just say, you might want to look at that to adjust it. So you're not.
Can I jump in for a moment on that one?
Sure.
So, so you know, typically when we're typing a stream, we're doing it following the Washington administrative codes, criteria for gradient and width and channel dynamics. So we're, we're typically not, you know, fishing the stream and identifying what's present there. It's just a more broad stream typing system based on physical attributes. And it would be more inclusive to update the definition of streams to reference that criteria as opposed to salmonid presence.
Yeah, that makes sense. But, but your comment here or the staff recommendation says fish bearing to include all fish. So all I'm saying is all fish might not be the, I mean, that might be, I get what you're saying about channeling. I, I'm totally for that too.
Sure. I, I understand that. I don't think that was the intent, but I understand how you read it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because sometimes words do have meaning, right? So when you say all fish, it's like, well, wait a second, what about invasives? Because we know they're out in the lake. Last thing, I want them spawning upstream and then living off the fry.
And just to clarify as well, that updating to say include all fish means that it would be, it would include habitat attributes that could accommodate fish. There doesn't have to actually be fish present. That it just has to have attributes that would support fish life.
I like that wording much better.
That is, that is ultimately what the state, what the state requirement and model does. So that, that's what we're, if I'm correct.
You're correct.
Yeah.
I can agree with that then. Yeah. Mapping, yeah, let's do it. I, I, I think the city, we need to budget for it. And if that's one of those ones, I think it's a long-term project. But let's look at, you know, our next budget cycle. How do I get that then on the work plan and move it forward? I know that's a council decision. But at the, at the same time, I would be in support of moving that project forward. It's pretty clear we have a plateau and steep slope all around. And, and then the geo-hazard needs to be updated. And so, you know, move forward on the mapping. I think one of the other council members mentioned that we have good stormwater regulations. And so the idea of seeing how we can make those two things marry out so it's not redundant in our code coming up on the revision, that would, I don't know how that works. So I'd be looking for staff to bring forward that idea is that, okay, yes, we have our stormwater codes that's protecting these areas, landslide hazard, flooding, all of the rest of them. Stormwater definitely plays a part. I don't know how you separate that out so it's not redundant or confusing. But it would be nice if that was something that we could clean up this year or next.
So, so staff, we worked closely with our stormwater team and we combed through the critical area regulations to see what was redundant, what was covered by various parts of the 1,100-page King County Surface Water Design Manual. It was very enlightening. It's very technical. I kind of barely wrap my head around it and I work here. So, but if it, if the council feels that it would be helpful to have that sort of analysis more concise and in plain English, if you think that would be helpful, that's something that we could put together as an exhibit if, if it helps with the decision-making process.
And does that, would we then include that in the addendum to our stormwater? Or is this just something to help with making a decision?
This would just be for decision-making purposes. This would, we are not looking to change the stormwater regulations. Yeah.
Yeah. What, what we're really trying to achieve here is to, so, so going back in time with the city, prior to the season corporation, there was, there were rules regarding erosion hazard areas because there were, there were very light stormwater rules. So erosion and, and geo-hazards were largely controlled through those rules, not stormwater rules. What's happened over time is the stormwater rules have grown more effective and complex and, and difficult to get through, if you will. And they largely eclipse the geo-hazard rules now. So what we'd be doing is looking for anything that's left in the geo-hazard rules that is not already covered in the stormwater rules and keeping that or drawing your attention to that and trying to figure out how to handle that. But anything that's already covered by stormwater rules, we would pull out of the critical areas rules because it's already accounted for in this rule set. Right now, we're causing additional expense to our applicants, our permit applicants, because they have to do two, two, two reports. One, that's a critical areas report that addresses the critical areas rules and one that's a drainage report that addresses the stormwater rules. But in many cases, they're redundant. So it would, it would help consolidate us down. It doesn't achieve a different outcome, it's just redundant. So we're trying to help our, our applicants, who these days are largely your neighbors, individual homeowners, trying to get through the process, have a much simpler approach to how to, how to navigate our regulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gupta.
Thank you for the presentation and thank you for answering the questions that I'd emailed. Really appreciate the quick turnaround on that. I did have one follow-up question on something I'd asked. The reduction of the requirement required to develop a buffer in landslide hazard areas when a suitable assessment is performed. Is that, is that in reference to the increased precision that we were talking about with the parcel level technology? Is that, so you can, you can address each parcel individually rather than relying on those regional maps? Is that where that stems from?
Yes.
So we already allow for reductions of buffers. What we're trying to do is add some additional clarity around the requirements to get you there. We, we, a property owner, not all slopes are created equally. In many instances, there are slopes that meet a steep slope definition that might not warrant regulation. In many instances, there are steep slopes that would definitely warrant regulation. And in other instances, And in other instances, there are opportunities to reduce the buffer because the size of the buffer, the type of development, et cetera, would not pose a threat to that slope. We would require a report prepared by a qualified geotechnical consultant, which I would, I think we're trying, the way we're defining it, would achieve, would require a license of a qualified or would require signature from a licensed civil engineer specializing in geotechnical engineering, as well as a licensed geologist, right? So the two together make up the type of qualified professional credential we're looking for. We would then take that report and we'd review it. And we would also send it to our third-party consultant, who has a similarly qualified expert, who would then review it and make site visit and perform the review needed to verify what the report is saying.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to, I know when we were presented the information about the TDR program and specifically the internal TDR program, it seemed to me like a lot of the sites that might qualify for that were located on steep slopes. So I just wanted to make sure that we weren't potentially amending the code to allow for greater development there. And then six months in the future, when we stand that program up going, gosh, how do we disincentivize development here to sell those development credits?
Yeah, there, I don't see that happening. I see, you know, the current system, just, I want to say, fine-tuning the system we've been using. There are still many properties that are highly encumbered by slopes that will not be built on, that would be, that would be well-suited for something like an internal TDR program.
Great, thanks, really appreciate it.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you. I just had a comment. I watched the planning commission meeting on this. And one of the commissioners, I just thought this comment was worth mentioning to council. One of the commissioners mentioned that we are in an urban growth area and to be mindful that, you know, we're making, you know, pretty important decisions, and it's really a balance. You know, it's a balance between the environment and people, you know, residents who may want to develop their property. And, you know, we're developing the town center. And so just to, just to recognize, you know, those two need to kind of like merge together. And so that is just, you know, a general comment for all of council, which really resonated with me when I listened to the commissioner talk about that. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Do you have another one, too? Okay, just quickly, could you do me the grand favor of going back to Slide eight for me? Which I believe is the mitigation. Right. And... Can you give me an example of how this would work? Because what I don't want to have happen is for us to create a barrier, for example, that for, if we have a project that's low-income housing, where we're trying to eliminate barriers, is this a barrier? Can you just, can you give me an example so that I understand it more clearly? And also just, who pays for what?
So I'll start with one summary, and then I'll pass it over to Nell, who knows a lot about this topic. So first of all, our code does already allow off-site compensatory mitigation through banks. However, it is seen as sort of a last resort. We utilize mitigation sequencing as councilmember Trina indicated. The first, the first step is avoidance. Make your project smaller, avoid, design around it. The next step is minimization, minimize the impact, right? And then the last step is mitigation. So when there is an impact and it's minimized, you're required to mitigate. And then it goes on to say, you're required to mitigate onsite inclined. And what that means is you have to mitigate on the property to replicate the function of what you're impacting, right? But in the case of small projects where there are very minimal impacts, there, the success rate is the challenge. Because what ends up happening is the death of a thousand cuts. You know, if we have many small projects across the city that are largely following mitigation sequencing that result in a very small amount of mitigation that's required, the individual homeowner is really, it depends on somebody's stewardship ethic. If you have a high stewardship ethic, you're going to have a very successful mitigation project. But if your stewardship ethic is meh, you know, I just want to get through this, my kids are going to soccer, I'm too busy, kind of thing, I get it. Or if you sell the property to somebody who has no stewardship ethic, well, then that's all lost. So the concept is, is that we are allowing, and some cities have gone to this because it's actually proven to be more successful to consolidate smaller mitigation efforts into a bank location that is found within the same watershed basin. And I'll let Nell fill in where I missed it, so.
Yeah, no, that was a good foundation. I feel like there were a fair amount of questions on this topic, and it might help to take a bit of a step back. So some of the things that drove the development of mitigation banking were Washington State Department of Ecology's review of mitigation sites and how successful they'd been over, over a period of decades. And they, you know, those results were not positive. They were finding that, you know, there was a net loss of functions and values. And so, you know, these mitigation banks are certified by the Washington State Department of Ecology. So they have to meet certain benchmarks. They're consolidated areas that are selected on a watershed landscape scale to have a net benefit. And they go through annual benchmarks to ensure that they're, you know, meeting success.
Who is paying for that?
The applicant buys credits
I see.
from a bank based on their, the category of wetland that they're impacting, the area. So a site-specific assessment using this credit debit method is often applied to determine the number of credits that are needed.
Okay.
I like that better. That was very helpful.
Okay, good.
And I have one last comment. In general, I'm in agreement with staff recommendations. The one comment I have, and it's really for council, is that I hear too many times map. I wish we had better maps. And I'm, I'm done with that. I would like to understand, how much does it cost to have maps that actually are more functional for us? I understand it's expensive. I don't know what that means. How many zeros is that? I know you don't have an answer to that right now, but it is something that I would deeply love to know, is, what does it take for us to have the kinds of maps that actually decrease time spent in trying to figure stuff out that we should already know if we had better maps?
So I think we could bring back an answer to that at some point. All cities are faced with this. Some cities made big investments in this early on. The city of Bellevue, for example, made a very large investment in geographic information systems decades ago. And as a result, they have fairly robust maps. However, there's still advisory.
Okay, I'm okay with, I'm okay with advisory. I'm okay with advisory. Because I do think we have to look at our situation in a holistic way. Maps allows us to do that. So that part's okay. It's just trying to understand, when do we get to better maps that really, that we agree on, where we agree on the data?
And we'll come back with that. We have been saving our cans in the basement. We'll take them to Oregon.
Okay. And I know we're not done with questions here. So I'm done with my questions, and we're back to councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, just really quickly, just to make sure, I know we kind of belabor the point, but on the ability to have the off-site banking and mitigation. If I heard you correctly, the goal here is to actually end up with better results at the end, right? It's not a way to necessarily let somebody off the hook, per se. It's really about the long-term ability to, to save and actually have that, that land area, right? That's really what we're going for. And it's similar to like when we look at, when we've looked at even some of our zoning changes that we made when we looked at like net density versus, you know, sort of the gross was to really be able to pull together green spaces and do it in a way that was meaningful as opposed to, I have a pin over here and I have a pin over here, right? We want to be able to have those spaces. Did I hear that correctly? That it's, it really is about that long-term improved results?
Yes, absolutely. That's a central part of it. The other piece is that it draws upon the best available science about regulating our watersheds at a landscape scale. So, you know, if we're just working within city boundaries, we aren't always able to utilize these banks because of their service areas are based on watersheds as opposed to city boundaries. But it is part of that trade-off about recognizing the competing priorities that are coming out of the Growth Management Act.
Okay, well, I like better results at the end. And I would agree with Deputy Mayor Howe. I also want to just throw about the maps. But I also want to say, like, I also appreciate that, like, first step, I've been advised that baby steps, we always use that term to imply that it's going to be easier. Baby steps are really hard, so we shouldn't use that phrase to imply it's going to be easier. We should take small steps, bite-sized morsels that, for now, the maps we have, we can simply, you know, call them advisory and then figure out on our longer-term work plan, when can we get the maps in? But I would agree with Deputy Mayor Howe that it would be great to get that information back and figure out when, when and if is the right time for us to convert into the 21st century.
Cool.
Okay, thank you. And now, councilmember Gupta.
Yeah, very quickly, I know you'd mentioned there's a selection process for the mitigation banking sites. But are those all necessarily public property? Is there, are they like aggregated private property that happens to be encumbered? Is it a mix?
Are you talking about the establishment of a mitigation bank site?
The receipt, I guess it would be like the receiving site, the larger area. Are those necessarily public property or?
Oh, I don't believe so. I think they're privately owned. And they're certified by the Washington State Department of Ecology. So they have certain performance metrics that they have to meet. And they actually have to have demonstrated improvement in functions before they have credits available to sell. So it is, it is a business type. It's a business model.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep.
And councilmember Trine.
Yeah, so I'd just add one thing on number five is clarification, SPT. What was the initial, SP, SPTH?
Yeah, Site Potential Tree Height, SPTH. And there's, there's an online tool that WDFW has developed to show what that looks like on the landscape, although there are some data gaps.
Yeah, so that's the retention of trees within stream buffers?
No, so, well, anytime you protect a buffer, that's certainly one of the goals. But the Site Potential Tree Height, it's actually Site Potential Tree Height 200. It's, it's based on looking at what the full riparian function would be, including if those trees in the riparian zone were allowed to reach their full height after 200 years of growth. And that's what those recommended buffer widths are based on, which is why they're so large.
We should do that.
The regulatory challenge there is that Sammamish being ex-urban, suburban, and urban, really, so we're really centered around suburban, is largely built out around many of our streams. And if we were to adopt a Site Potential Tree Height tool, it's a completely different method of regulating streams and would result in rendering a large percentage of homes built along streams as legal non-conforming because the buffer would then extend across the back of the property, over the home, et cetera. The challenge there is when you render a home legal non-conforming, it's harder to get homeowner's insurance. It's harder to deal with upon replacement. It's harder to get permits to deal with any modest improvements or enlargements to the home. And it really drives down property values for those homes along that stream when they're rendered non-conforming. We'd also have to do substantial outreach to all of the property owners that front those streams in order to make sure they were aware of the change in the format of regulation. Would likely cause a delay in this project, which we'd be okay with if that was the direction we're given. We'd come back to you sometime next summer after we've had a chance to adequately analyze this and bring it to all the property owners who'd be affected by it.
Well, council...
I'd take that to the, I'd take that to the planning commission and have a chat about that because that sounds like long-term sustainability for the city of Sammamish. That sounds like a pretty good idea to me. Thanks.
Well, David, Avril, Yasvir, Jaclyn, and Nell, I hope you got the information you needed and you got some feedback. I know that we want to thank you very much for the presentation and spending the time to educate us, make us smarter about this so that we could do a better job, frankly. So thank you for your time.
We appreciate your feedback. And if you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out to us. We'd be more than happy to answer them, meet with you, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next, let's move on to new business. So that would be council reports. And I believe that councilmember Lamb has a report.
Yeah, mine's just a follow-up for the meetings that I had last month. The Public Issue Committee meeting. We discussed the public defender caseload standards. The Washington State Bar Association Board of Governors is looking to change the public defense standards, which includes reducing by nearly two-thirds the maximum caseload for defense attorneys and simultaneously trying to find ways to increase people that want to become public defenders. And how that would affect us for Sammamish is that because we contract with public defenders, is that if caseloads are reduced, how would that impact our contract costs? There is the Emergency Medical Services levy renewal that expires December 31st. The, that's the Medic One EMS levy. And that would be, if it passes, it's a renewal, a six-year levy that would be approximately $193 for the annual cost for each homeowner. And for the King County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, we discussed the REPLUS grant program. Sammamish wasn't a part of, we hadn't pledged to be a part of REPLUS at the time, but we have the option in the future to apply for grants. The solid waste rates look like they'll be going up in 2025, 11.5%. And I do have a Public Issue Committee meeting on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some more council reports, it looks like. So councilmember O'Farrell.
It's not really a report. It was really just a community announcement I wanted just to bring everyone's attention to. So in about two weeks' time, on May 23rd, Thursday, at 6:00 PM, across the street at Skyline High School is the most exciting basketball game you will ever witness in your life. And I do not say that, I'm not exaggerating. I've been to many of them. It's called Shooting Stars Basketball. And we are playing Eastlake High School. It's made up of five players in both teams. Two players are typical basketball players. The other three are players with special needs. It is, the cheerleaders are there, the band is there, all the referees are there. It's a very, very exciting game. It is free of charge, there is no admission. I encourage all of you to go. It will do you the power of good. It will lift your spirits and will show you what the human spirit is capable of. And even if you're not a basketball game, it will turn you into one. My son played in many of them. It was one of the most heartwarming events I've ever been to. So I encourage all of you to go, May 23rd, 6:00 PM, Skyline High School, whether you're an Eastlake fan or a Skyline fan. I encourage you to go because the rivalry is huge. So please go. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Well, I don't want to follow that one. Wow. But I'm feeling like Roisin and I might need a little like charity donation throw-down on this game. So we'll, we'll think about that and come back. I, I have boring updates compared to that. We do have an EFOR meeting. But really, there's kind of nothing on the EFOR agenda. It's, there's no decision-making. The biggest decision we will make is when we will have our Finance Committee meeting. So that's the only thing on there. But I did send out an email to council and to some of our directors. The last GMPB meeting, which is the Growth Management Policy Board meeting, was quite incredible. There were four different presentations. Two of them were quite outstanding. The first one was around... The first one was around land use and policies and how those can either mitigate or exacerbate the racial disparities in homeownership. And it was really, really incredible. And then the second one, I'm sorry, I didn't get to talk to David about this, but there's a pilot program being started by the PSRC for assisting jurisdictions with TDR programs. And so I know that there was a great presentation on that. I know David had a meeting with the folks to find out more information, so I'm excited to see if that is a promising venture for us. And then, yeah, so those were probably the two. There was also one on regional transit, which was kind of exciting, but not as exciting as the first two. So I sent over the materials, if you have a chance to take a look, I highly recommend those.
Councilmember Lamb. Did you have an? And I, that's me, sorry. Councilmember Trean.
And just for us as a body here, Thursday, May 30th, is the 2024 Annual General Assembly for PSRC. It's from 10:30 AM to 1:00 PM and I would take the day off and go if there isn't, and it requires a voting member in attendance from the city, so, but I would be available. I can make myself available for that on May 30th, but if someone else wants to go and be the voting member.
Personally, I love the idea because you never get a chance to go to anything, so I'm in favor, but it'd be interesting hearing what others have to say. Any issues?
Okay.
That would be great.
I'll put that on my calendar then and sign up for it. Thanks.
Okay. And Mr. City Manager--
Actually, I'm, sorry, I forgot. I forgot my exciting piece, which is it's Bike Everywhere Month. And I want to give a shout-out to councilmember Gupta. So we biked to the grand opening of the light rail. So we biked from Sammamish to Bellevue. Councilmember Gupta also had to bike from his house to my house, which was additional, and he actually uses his legs to power his bike. I'm a cheater and I have an e-bike. But it was a great time, we had a great ride. It was an amazing event to be there for the grand opening of the light rail and I can't wait for it to come to Marymore and the Redmond Town Center. But shout-out to councilmember Gupta and please try to bike everywhere. I've been biking around. It's really awesome. Our city is fun. So bike everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before you give your report, Mr. City Manager, I just quickly thank the staff, Anjali's team in particular, who helped do a celebration this afternoon for the, well, the kind of the christening of the Parker property. And being able to look at that was fabulous. What? I'm so sorry. I'm, well, I have pictures.
Y'all are good at stealing my thunder.
It's all you. It's all you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of quick items on top of that one. Want to remind the community that Rigapalooza is this Saturday. It's going to be right outside the chambers on the City Hall Civic Plaza. Councilmember Stewart is encouraging you to ride your bike there. It is going to be warm. We're supposed to top 80 on Saturday, so encourage everyone to come out. We're going to have all the big fun trucks out there and fire trucks, police vehicles, front loaders, all the good stuff will be out on the plaza, so encourage everyone to come out and join us. Again, want to remind, Farmer's Market opens on Wednesday, May 15th. There will be a Ring the Bell Kickoff the Market event at 4:00 PM. More like a little ceremony, but we'll be out there for that. Looking forward to the market kicking off this year. And again, city is proud to be a co-sponsor of the market throughout the market season. And I want to share with council, we're very excited this week, later this week, we have our new communications manager starting. Her name is Angie Malar and we will get her introduced around once she gets her feet on the ground, but we're excited to have her. She comes to us from the city of Sea-Tac and so she's got municipal experience. So we're excited to have her onboard and looking forward to getting her out to some of our events as we kick off our event season. Thank you.
But you could go into more detail on the Parker property.
Sure. We're very excited. We secured a conservation futures grant from the, from King County to purchase the Parker property from the family who had, had been in the family's generation for three generations. They're a long, long time Sammamish residents and wanted to keep the property in public ownership, so we're very excited. We'll be bringing back at some point in time the request for to do master planning on that parcel with the caveat that conservation future dollars require passive use. So it'll be a very passive park. It's beautiful. We have also, were able to purchase the property just to the west of it, down the hill, which will connect into Lake Sammamish Parkway. So once that gets started, presumably there will be some trails that connect all the way down from that parcel. So we're excited. This was the kickoff of ownership of both of those and then, once we get farther along and get some actual trails and things in place up there, then we'll be able to open that to the property. It's probably going to be a couple of years, but something to look forward to. So we're excited about that. I think those of you that were able to come out today, hopefully you got a chance to walk down the very short temporary trail that we put up. I'm told by the staff that as of a couple of weeks ago, you could see the lake, but now that spring is officially fully here, you can no longer see it from that trail, but it's there. So with that, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Well, it was wonderful and I really do appreciate the staff time in putting that together. It's beautiful and I think the park almost designs itself in terms of the trail wandering down. I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's no more good for the order.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.